Order. Uh, could I have a roll call, please, Ms. Brooks? Ms. Brooks, are you, you're muted. You're still muted.
Good grief. Ms. Bryant?
Yes, I'm here.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
And Dr. Turner?
I'm here. Thank you. Uh, we're going to dispense with the Pledge of Allegiance for this evening and move on to discussion of the agenda. Board members have had the opportunity to look at the agenda. There was a new one sent out late this afternoon, but I believe they all indicated that they had had a chance to see that. Uh, so do I have a motion to accept the agenda as written? Second. Okay, that was moved by Mr. Kilgore and will say seconded by Mrs. Ellis, I believe. Uh, any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Yes. Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes. Uh, item five on our agenda is reading and signing of the minutes. Uh, the minutes were set out. We had quite a few special meetings during the month of May because of our superintendent search. Everyone on the board should have had the opportunity to read those minutes. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes as written?
Second.
Okay, moved by Mr. Kilgore, seconded by Mrs. Ellis. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes. Before we move on to the next item in the agenda, I would like to introduce our new superintendent. Uh, we'd like to welcome Dr. Valerie Hawkins. Dr. Hawkins is coming to us from Princeton City Schools, and prior to that, she was at Great Oaks. Uh, she is bringing an immense amount of enthusiasm with her to our district. She has some fresh ideas, but we were also really interested in getting someone who was committed to continuing the good work that we've been doing, and and she's committed to that as well. Um, I have assured her that we have a fabulous team here at Mount Healthy, and I think she's been meeting a lot of them and getting to know them as they work toward trying to figure out what this coming year is going to be like. Um, so we're going to miss Dr. Cosby. She did a great job for us, but I'm confident that Dr. Hawkins is going to be up to whatever challenges we're going to be facing uh in the upcoming months and years. And so we'd like to welcome her.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm really excited to be here. And you're right, everyone has been so welcoming, and I'm enjoying getting to meet everyone.
We have great people in this district.
Sure do.
Okay, item six on our agenda, special orders, and that the first item is the Mount Healthy Teachers Association, Ms. Wakefield.
Thank you, Dr. Turner. Um, first, I would like to say welcome to Dr. Hawkins on behalf of MHTA members. Um, the teachers have really appreciated the time that you have afforded to them to come talk to you. Um, they have really enjoyed that as well as I did, and we're really looking forward to um to this coming year and years to come with you.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay. Do you have anything else, Ms. Wakefield?
No, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, B is communications announcements, public input. I doubt that we have any, Dr. Hawkins. Do you have anything?
No, we don't have any. No one requested that.
Okay. Uh, item C is recognition, David Montgomery. Uh, who's taking that one?
I I have that one. So, Mr. Montgomery received a prestigious award recently, and so we just wanted to make note of that tonight. The Piccolo Award, which is given by the Chicago Bears, is given to a player that best exemplifies courage, loyalty, teamwork, dedication, and a sense of humor. So out of all of the people, a former Mount Healthy grad was picked, David Montgomery. And so while I am new to Mount Healthy, I'm already very proud to be associated with this great award. So we just wanted to note that accomplishment publicly tonight.
Thank you. Yeah, we're all really proud of of David Montgomery. He's a great guy. Uh, item nine, or I mean, sorry, item D, uh, we have a presentation of video.
Do you want to introduce it, um, Dr. Hawkins?
Sure. I I'd be happy to. So one of our students was recently featured on Channel Five News. Jordan Smith was recently a kindergartner, and I think you'll be amazed by the video and just so proud of the way that she speaks so well of Mount Healthy, and our sign is prominently featured in the video. So I think we'll play that, and I hope you all enjoy it as much as I did.
Let me know if you don't see it, because for some reason I can't show my video, but hopefully showing my screen will still work.
Okay.
Can I see my screen?
Yes.
We can see it.
Great, great, because you don't need to see me, so.
I wanted to show my grandkids that this is what it's all about, standing up for your rights.
It was heartbreaking to hear that, obviously, at some point she felt like she wasn't a person and that she didn't matter, and that this movement was really affirming for her. I put uh flowers and and things in there to to show that she has so many possibilities for growth and what she might become in her future.
Was beautiful, beautiful, just like me, so.
Baby, she'll be able to tell her kids and her grandkids all about what how this picture became.
It means that black lives matter, and they should all come together. Everybody should come together and pray and be together, love each other.
That was very nice. Uh, I'm sure her family's very proud of her. Uh, seven on our on our agenda is the Vocational Board Report, uh, Mrs. Ellis.
I disappeared, so I didn't didn't see or hear you.
Oh.
Okay. Um, the June meeting of the Great Oaks Board of Directors was held online via Zoom and broadcast to the public on Facebook Live. This was in accordance with the recent state legislation temporarily allowing online public meeting. Uh, the Treasurer CFO recapped, uh, the Treasurer CEO CFO Ben Van Horn providing an overview of actions taken throughout the year to successfully address strategies regarding financial stewardship, efficiency, and communication. He cited the maintenance of the district's AAA rating accuracy of the five-year forecast, a plan to facilitate communication between the business office and other district staff in the sale of forty-five million in bonds to finance construction and renovations at a favorable interest rate. Uh, the President CEO recap. President CEO Harry Snyder discussed activities and district accomplishments for 2019, 2020. The highlights were the passage of the levy renewal in November of 2018 allow for the following results. Construction of a new addition at Laurel Oaks Career Campus beginning in August of 2019. Architects presented updated plans for renovation and additions at the Laurel Oaks Career Campus. A new fire tar tower and burn building is moving forward with construction at Scarlet Oaks Career Campus for training, future, and current community firefighters, for adults and high school students. Upgrades, repairs, and refresh projects are in progress at our IRC Diamond in Scarlet Oak. Uh, staff continue to learn about and practice R factor principles, including developing a culture playbook. Data shows the district is achieving goals of at least thirty percent of classroom time spent in peer-to-peer discussion. Campuses have established an active building instructional leadership team to enhance teaching. And enrollment of high school students on campus and in satellite programs increased again in 2019, 2020. Uh, Great Oaks Career Campus is a top workplace of the Cincinnati Enquirer for the fifth year in a row. Curriculum review prior to the regular board meeting, members of the Education Program Design and Evaluation Committee and others heard presentation by Great Oaks Instructions and staff on twelve curriculums under review. That's the end of my report. Excuse me.
Thank you. Next item. Next item is our legislative report. The governor has signed House Bill 164. Uh, this is, it began as a bill about religious expression in schools. Uh, that part of the bill gives religiously oriented school groups the same right to use school facilities as secular groups and allows students to express religious ideas in assignments without any kind of penalty. But then a lot got tacked on to it because of the pandemic. As signed by Governor DeWine, the bill also addresses many topics of concern in the current pandemic. Among the provisions are new funding guidelines for districts, new guidance on teacher and principal evaluations, permission for students who need end-of-year exam grades for graduation to use course grades instead. For the 2021 school year only, it adjusts expectations for the third grade reading guarantee. It exempts schools from having a reading improvement plan in place for the 2021 year based on twenty or on nineteen to 2020 results. It grants permission for services to be provided for special needs students remotely and permits remote or blended learning for all schools for the 2021 school year. It is a huge bill. There's an enormous amount of information and um guidelines and rules and uh things in it. If anyone would like to read the summary of it, just the summary is twenty pages long. But if you'd like to read it, let me know, and I'd be happy to pass that along to you. In addition, the governor has also announced that practice for contact sports may resume. Guidelines for both mandatory and recommended best practices have been issued. I emailed all of those to board members this afternoon. Governor DeWine is also calling for all schools to reopen in the fall, but is leaving many of the details as to what that will look like to to individual districts. So he has said that he wants schools to open, but whether that's uh in-person, online, blended, whether we want to change our opening dates, those kinds of things, he's giving us quite a bit of latitude on. And that's my report. Uh, the next item on our agenda, number nine, is the report of the treasurer. So handing it over to you, Ms. Brooks.
Thank you. Did you say something, Carol?
I said unmute.
No. Okay. The um the first, oh, first I want to tell you, there is um an opportunity to listen to Governor DeWine and others talk about the House Bill 164 on Friday. You should have gotten an email about that from OSBA. I believe it's on Friday at ten o'clock AM. Item A, under my report, is just an informational item that we redeemed eighty-two hundred dollars from the Capital One Rewards Program. Item B is a recommendation to accept the May 2020 schedule of bills.
So move.
Do I have a second? Everybody's muted, I believe.
Second.
All right, moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Ms. Bryant. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Yes. Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item C is a recommendation to accept the May 2020 financial statement.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay, moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Mr. Glenn. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item C is a recommendation to amend and approve the 2020 appropriations within the amended and approved Certificate of Estimated Resources.
Okay, that's actually item D.
Excuse me. Item D.
Do I have a motion for that?
So move.
Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Ms. Bryant. Any discussion?
Yes, uh, we do this every year at the end of the year, of course, and it's just merely um a picture of what has happened for the whole year and where we ended up with all of our funds.
Okay. Any further discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item E is a recommendation to adopt temporary appropriations for FY21 at one hundred percent of the appropriations of FY20. This is merely to get the year started, and this excludes the federal programs.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Ms. Bryant. Any discussion?
This is also a close-out um item at the end of each year, each fiscal year.
Okay. Any further discussion? Can we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item F is to authorize the treasurer to make any advances or transfer of funds as necessary to close out fiscal year 2020.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Bryant, seconded by Mrs. Ellis. Any discussion? Can we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item G is a recommendation to authorize Certificate of Participation Bonds issued as tax-exempt obligations.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Mr. Glenn. Any discussion? Can we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you so much, Heather. You can escape now. Item H is a recommendation to approve payment of the following invoices. Public School Works for ten thousand four sixty. I believe that's Avant Communications and Technology, four hundred and fifty. Three is uh Genter Electrical Contractors for sixteen hundred, and the HCESC in the amount of fourteen, four hundred and twenty dollars. These are paid under, received and paid under, then announced certificate.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Mr. Glenn. Any discussion?
What is the Public School Works?
Um, Public School Works is the system that we use to track a lot of information. It uses, it's used to track our discipline data. If a teacher writes a referral, they put it into Public School Works. It's also used for training of our staff. So instead of bringing in a facilitator, for instance, for bloodborne pathogens and slips and falls and all those different things, this is a computerized PD system, so those units can just easily be assigned to our staff. They can go through them for compliance and any board policies that need to be reviewed. We can also assign them in Public School Works. It also allows us to send information that has to legally be posted to our coaches. For an example, would be for steroid use that would be hanging in the locker room. So it's um a system that takes care of a lot of different needs of our district at a pretty reasonable price for everything that it accomplishes.
Okay, thanks.
Becky, we've been using that for quite some time, haven't we? Okay.
It's the first time I've seen it broken down.
Any, any additional discussion? Could we have a vote?
I'm mute. I'm mute.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes, ma'am.
Why do you keep muting yourself? You got a dog running around there?
Well, you never know. I could be making weird noises or something. I could be singing "Happy Birthday" to Mr. Bryant.
Uh, that is true.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
And Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. And the last recommendation is I to authorize the treasurer to transfer the following funds. Three thousand five hundred and forty-five dollars and ninety cents from the class of 2020 to the class of 2021.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
I think that was Mr. Kilgore who made the initial motion and seconded by Mrs. Ellis. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
And I am finished.
Okay. Uh, item ten on our agenda, we have the Superintendent's Report. Turn it over to Dr. Hawkins.
Great. So the first thing, item A, is the recommendation to file a consolidated continuous improvement plan, which we often refer to as the CCIP for fiscal year 2021. The filing of the consolidated continuous improvement plan permits the Local Education Agency, or LEA, Mount Healthy City School District, to submit one application for Title One Part A, which is basic programs, Title Two A, supporting effective instruction, Title Three, which is language instruction for English learning, Title Four, state-supported in academic enrichment, IDEA B, special education, and IDEA E C S E, early childhood special education in lieu of separate applications for each program.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Kilgore, seconded by Mrs. Ellis. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Okay. Item B is the recommendation to adopt a resolution of participation in the following programs for fiscal year 2021, and those programs are Title One Part A, Title One School Improvement, one zero zero three, Title Two A, Title Three, Title Four, Special Education Part B, IDEA, E C S E, Early Childhood Special Education, High Schools That Work, IDEA B, Restoration, School and Quality Improvement, Assistance, Homeless Children and Youth, Striving Readers, Comprehensive Literacy. Lot of them there.
Yes. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Kilgore, seconded by uh Mrs. Ellis. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Great. Item C is the first reading for recommended Mount Healthy Board of Education bylaw and policy changes, which deals with three one two oh point oh four, the employment of substitutes.
Okay.
All right, so there's no vote on that. And item D is the recommendation to adopt a resolution authorizing in lieu of transportation pay for the 2019-20 school year for the following students. Jaden and Aleah Chaney apparently were left off of a previous list, and they are being transported to beautiful Savior Lutheran.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Kilgore, seconded by Mrs. Ellis. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Okay. Item E, recommendation to approve the Mount Healthy Junior/Senior High Program Planning Guide for the 2020-21 school year.
I have a motion.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Kilgore, seconded by Mrs. Ellis. Any discussion? I'll just jump in and say I I took a quick look at it this afternoon. I couldn't read through all of it, but it's it's a very nice-looking document. Everyone who worked on it did a really great job.
Right. Right. Fantastic.
Any other discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Okay. Item F is the recommendation that the Mount Healthy City School District participate in the National School Lunch Program for the 2021 school year.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Kilgore, seconded by Mrs. Ellis. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Great. Item G is recommendation to approve the breakfast lunch programs for the 2021 school year with community eligibility provision. All students will eat breakfast and lunch for free. If students would like to purchase additional breakfast or lunch, the cost would be as follows. Breakfast is $1.25. Student lunch prices for elementary is $2.75. Junior and senior high school, $3, and milk is 50 cents. And there are à la carte items that are available at an additional cost.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Kilgore, seconded by Ms. Bryant. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Item H is recommendation to approve the renewal of the Ohio School Plan OSP insurance policy. This policy covers district-wide insurance for cyber, property, violence, auto liability, and pollution. And it's effective from July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2021.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Kilgore, seconded by Mrs. Bryant. Any discussion?
What's the cost on this?
I knew you were going to ask that and I don't have it. You know, I could find it.
That's all right. Is it more than last year?
No. No, it's not. I do know that part.
Do you want me to find it, Becky?
Pardon?
Do you want me to find it?
He said it was okay. Thank you, Jen.
Any further discussion? Can we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Item I is the recommendation to approve the Hamilton County Educational Service Center Agreement for the 2019-20 school year.
And that's 2020.
2021. Sorry, I'm looking.
Sorry about that.
It's okay. And there was a separate attachment for that.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Mr. Glenn. Any discussion?
I'd like to point out that we hire psychologists, three psychologists from the HCESC. Dr. Hawkins, were you going to say this and I jumped in there?
No, no. Go right ahead, Becky.
Okay. Six speech therapists. We have a physical therapist. We get occupational therapy. We participate. We hire a gifted and talented coordinator for the district. We have some attendance services and division diversionary court case coordination. We have four tenths of an FTE for that. And we have three pathways to employment for some of our special needs. We have under behavior and social skills consultation. We have point four FTEs for that. Those are the kind of things that are in there and it should be less than last year based on what we know right now.
Okay. Any further discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Okay. The next item is item J, recommendation to enter into a service agreement with Hamilton County Educational Service Center for instructional technology coaches for the junior/senior high, North Elementary and South Elementary, which was part of what Becky mentioned earlier. They provide a great service for us and we're able to utilize them without them actually being employees of Mount Healthy.
I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Mr. Glenn. Any discussion? And could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Great. Item K is recommendation to approve continuing the HCC service agreement for two technicians for the 2021 school year.
Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Ms. Bryant. Any discussion?
We did have three last year and we have pared it back to two for, for now.
Okay. Any additional discussion? And could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Great. L is the recommendation to approve the annual contract for services with Hamilton County Cooperative HCC for the 2021 school year.
Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Ms. Bryant. Any discussion? And could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Item M is recommendation to adopt the consent agenda. And I'm not sure, do you want me to read through all of this? Or is it something that you guys, you just review? Okay. Just want to make sure.
So do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Kilgore, seconded by Mrs. Ellis. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Item 11 on the agenda is addendum to the agenda. We do not have any. 12 is special orders. We do not have any. 13 is open discussion by the Board of Education, and I do have a couple of things. As I mentioned in the legislative report, the governor has given guidance and has given the okay for sports, even contact sports, to begin having practices again. I don't know if the board wants to discuss coming up with a policy. We did have a request a couple of weeks ago about a group outside of our actual teams wanting to rent some of our space. So I don't know if we want to do that today. If we want to hold off, but at some point, we're going to need to come up with a policy or at least a verbal agreement on what we want to do as far as allowing the use of our facilities. For the past several months, we've basically not been allowing use of the facilities except in a few specific circumstances. And I think we will need to revisit that. So I'll, I'll open that up to the board to see if we want to discuss that this evening. Do we want to? You know, what, what do we want to do?
I think we ought to put it on hold for right now because the virus keep bouncing up and down. We really don't know what's going on. So I'd wait until maybe the next board meeting, we have a better idea on what to get.
Okay.
Are you speaking of our athletes, athletes? Or are you talking about the use by someone else?
I think as far as our athletes go, I believe we can leave that up to Dr. Hawkins and our athletic director and the coaches and the principal of the school in question to decide how they want to handle that. I'm thinking more in terms of outside groups that want to use our facilities.
I think the governor said today, or it might have been yesterday, that the football team can now go ahead and have contact.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
I think we just should limit it to the outside people that want to rent our space for right now.
Okay.
Well, can I ask? What, what would be the problem with someone else using our facility? It wouldn't be anything we would have to be involved in, is it?
Well, you probably have to the people rented the space. There would probably be some type of sanitation issue going on, what the event is going to be, what event they're going to be putting on. Even though there is social distancing, you know, we have to worry about that too.
And there, there could be questions of liability and, and that sort of thing as well.
But haven't we done this before? I, I, because I know a few times I have worked at the concession stand with other groups that were not Mount Healthy students taking and using our bill.
I'm thinking liability in terms of the, the, the virus. Like Dr. Kil, Mr. Kilgore said, how much do we have to sanitize? How much do, how much are we responsible for making sure that people are socially distanced? Do we have to try to make sure people are wearing masks? Does liability fall on us if it's an outside group?
Right. Is it on us to clean before, during, and after? Or is it up to them? Will they do it? If they don't do it, what happens? Yeah?
Yeah. I, I agree with Mr. Kilgore. I think for right now, we can, we can let our own personnel decide on a case-by-case basis for our teams. But for outside groups, I'm fine with just saying it, it's not something we want to, we want to do right now. Other board members can feel free to express their opinions.
I feel like they should be able to use the facilities if we come up with some guidelines and with the superintendent and the athletic director, what we will feel safe in doing.
Yeah. Who's coming up with those guidelines?
Good question.
Becky is...
I'm sure you would use the same guidelines that you would use if, if, if it was our people doing it. I, I think the only, to me, the only added cost would be the cleaning. You know, that to me is the only thing we would have to do now that we have not done in prior. Well, I ain't going to say that because we might clean it up. But I mean, it's, it's extra now because you have to have certain chemicals you use to clean. Whereas I don't think we use that type of stuff prior. But I mean, I'm okay. I know there was usually a couple of things that usually happened before the football season. And I was just wondering if those two things would happen and they did not. They were not our students. That's all I was asking about. Hey, but that's up to the athletic director and the superintendent, whatever they want to do.
Becky, do you, do you know how the liability issues would work here? And what kinds of things we would need to adjust in light of the virus?
I don't know what the changes have been since the COVID. I'm sure we could get that from the attorneys or from the governor's office.
So we would have to, we would have to add the additional cost onto whatever we were charging to rent the facilities.
I think that would, that would be appropriate because I'm sure we'll have to do additional cleaning. And some of those guidelines include cleaning in between throughout the, the function.
Like, I think it's every 15 minutes.
Wow.
Or something. It's really ridiculous.
Mm-hmm.
I, I tend to think that until, until the virus calms down a little bit and, and, you know, when case numbers are going down in this county, it might be worth looking at again. But right now, I believe the case numbers are still going up. I think our zip code is considered a hot, a hotspot for the county. And I'd say for the moment, I personally would feel more comfortable just, just not, not messing with having additional groups come in and, and use our facilities.
Mm-hmm. I agree.
Mr. Glenn, what are your thoughts?
Kind of split, being an athlete myself. Like, man, if we're the only location they get to go to, and that kind of hurts. Because it's a whole nother month that we're putting on pause to see if they can use our facilities. But then the other side is like, all right, who's in charge of cleaning and making sure that's able to get paid for and actually done appropriately.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it seems like right now we have, our, our administrators have their hands plentiful just trying to figure out how the upcoming school year is going to happen.
Mm-hmm.
And, and I hate to give anybody additional work on top of that.
Right.
Do we, Becky, I suppose you would note, how many groups are we talking about here? How, if we say no, who are we actually affecting? Do you have any, any idea?
There have been multiple groups over the years and they're not always the same every year. I know the Hilltop Football Association used to come in and use our place. One of the dance groups, that was an inside deal. So I real, I really couldn't give you a figure off the top of my head. Is Jenny Weddington, well, she may not know either because this is her first full year.
I have one request. We had one request that went through Coach Crouch. And he said that a group was wanting to rent for one to two times a week, no games, just practice. They would have insurance and it would be in the evenings. So that, it's RBI, which is an urban development organization that was designed to help underprivileged students play organized ball.
And that would be all outdoors, correct?
It would. So that's one formal request that we have received.
I think if, if maybe we, I'd be comfortable saying outdoor rentals would be okay. I know we have that dance competition usually every year and that's inside and it's a lot of people. And I definitely don't feel comfortable saying yes to something like that right now. But do we want to say outdoor activities would be good? We'll, we'll have to find out what the guidelines are and any additional costs will have to pass along to the, to the organization that wants to rent. How does everyone feel about that?
Well, can I say about the dance group? I think they went bankrupt because they left owing us money.
Oh.
I, I don't know. Did they ever pay Becky?
I don't believe they did, Carol. Good memory.
And this is either the second going on the third year. I, because I usually worked.
Right.
That, and, um, I remember the last time they were there, um, we found out shortly afterwards they had went bankrupt and that they were not able to pay the, the, the full amount of the bill. They may have paid part of it, but I, I know the whole bill was not paid. And the following year, I know I was not asked to work because, uh, she, I mean, Arlene told me they weren't, they weren't coming back. So I don't think we got the, but what I was speaking of was the kids that was down on the football field that played. And they were usually the junior, uh, junior high kids and the, and I think freshmen. They came from other schools, but it was never our kids involved in it. They just used our field. And I know last year Harrison was one of them. Now, why they got, came out of the way over here, I'll never know, but, um, they did. And, and it was somebody and, and, and another group. But like I said, they were like junior high. They were not the senior high, but the junior highs. And they, and it was several games. I mean, it wasn't like just them playing somebody and that was it. It was several games by different groups in there. I don't know exactly how, but you know, I'm not a football fan. I just.
Yeah. Well, uh, I think one thing we could do is, is we could turn it over to Dr. Hawkins and our athletic director, uh, you know, whoever seems to be appropriate for making decisions and just authorize them to do that on a case by case basis. Uh, without an official, formal whole set of guidelines. I, I feel comfortable with outdoor activities to a certain extent, but we would definitely have to find out what the expectations are as far as cleaning and we'd have to make sure about liability and, and those kinds of things. Uh, how, does, does everyone feel okay doing it, doing something like that?
Well, one of the concern about football, football fields is you have bodily fluids where guys or people are spitting on the, on the field, bleeding. You have a chance of HIV. So after each of those events, that field has to be cleaned with sterilized some way. You have to take that into consideration.
Uh, as far as, as far as COVID, I don't think that would actually be true. Um, my understanding is that if it's outdoors and would be in sunlight, sunlight would kill it relatively quickly. And it disperses in the air pretty quickly too. So, uh, I, I think the, the bigger danger, like the reason we didn't do graduation even outside at the football stadium would be that people would be sitting in really close proximity for a couple of hours. But if it's something like a practice and they're using reasonable hygiene measures, uh, my understanding is that that would be reasonably safe. I mean, the, the governor did say that contact sports could start, uh, practicing again. So the state has given the okay for that. Ms. Bryant, what are your thoughts?
Do we have some kind of set rules, like taking temperatures and whatnot for our kids already? Or is anyone not aware that we do or not?
We do. We have, um, Lori Miller developed a phase in plan for all of our coaches and our athletics. And so temperatures are screened, groups have to work in, um, pods of under ten. And once they move from that area, they, it's cleaned and sanitized. When they are on the field, they're not working all together. And we're currently in phase two. So they are working in different areas of the field, but in groups of less than ten. A week, another week, it will actually go into phase three where they can have larger groups work together. But there is a process for temperature checks and sanitation and working in restricted groups.
Okay.
Well, you know, uh, let me ask you, is this only coming to us because of the coronavirus? Because we've never had to talk about this or discuss this prior, prior board, prior years when this school year started. Because, you know, um, that was always set up by the athletic director and the coaches as to who used the field and when they use it. You know, she did the scheduling and everything. So I was just wondering, is this the only reason it's coming that we're discussing this?
Yes.
Because of the coronavirus?
Yes, because we had-
Somebody asked us our opinion.
We had, we had originally, you know, for a period of time, all of our facilities were closed for use even by our own students. And then when we got this request for this outside group, uh, we had the issue of, well, if, if we're not letting our own students use our facilities, are we going to let outside groups use the facilities? And yes, it's, it's specifically because of the virus that just puts a whole new layer of, um, needing to be really thoughtful about how we're doing things.
Okay.
So I want to go ahead and have, uh, Dr. Hawkins and the, uh, athletic director make the decision. If they have any doubt, bring it back to us.
Okay. Mr. Glenn, you good with that?
Yes, yes, I am.
Okay. I don't think it's something we need to have an actual resolution and vote as, as long as we have. I, I think, I'll, Becky, what do you think? Do we need an official vote on that?
No, as long as, um, I think Dr. Hawkins will, um, get out to the appropriate staff and, and, uh, do you see a need for a, a vote, Dr. Hawkins?
No, I think we're good and I will reach out with them and explain the additional cleaning and liability costs that would have to be part of that.
Cause I know you see they use, uh, sterilizing on the field because of, well, it's a little, little bit bigger. More aggressive guys hitting.
Okay. We will take care of it. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, another, uh, open discussion of the board item. Uh, Dr. Hawkins mentioned to Mrs. Ellis and me when we had our meeting to go over the agenda that there is a committee that is trying to come up with the guidelines for how school will open in the fall, what that will look like, uh, how many students will be in each classroom, all of those kinds of details that we have to do because of the virus. Uh, two board members can serve on that committee. Mrs. Ellis has already expressed that she'd like to attend. So I wanted to open it up to the other board members. Uh, would any of you want to be the second member on that committee? And have, you know, be, be part of that decision-making process? Be there when they're having those discussions and, and making those decisions.
And the date will be July 2nd. Just in case someone-
What time, Dr. Hawkins?
We're going to start at eight o'clock and I've just blocked until four. I don't necessarily think it'll take that long. Just as background, I, I did share with you some survey results that we've been getting from our community. Those surveys are open until June 30th. The buildings are also drafting a plan based on the survey results of what they feel would be appropriate for their building. And those will be in by Friday. So I will send all the information ahead of time for review. We are trying to keep the group around ten so that we can work together, but socially distanced from each other. But we would love to have board representation if it fits into your schedule.
What was the date again?
July 2nd. It's a Thursday.
I would like to.
Great.
Okay. All right. So Mrs. Ellis and Ms. Bryant will be part of that committee. And that will be, uh, that will be nice to have board members on there. Uh, my final item is, uh, and this was, I'm going to give credit where credit is due. This was Ms. Bryant's idea. I wish I had thought of it, but I didn't. Uh, the idea of having some sort of welcome event, uh, maybe a meet and greet for Dr. Hawkins. When we've hired, when we hired Dr. Cosby, for instance, we were having in-person board meetings. So if people wanted to meet her in her first month or two, they just came to a board meeting. That's not happening right now. And I know that you are available to meet with people, but we thought it might be nice to have some sort of event. Uh, so I wanted to see how Dr. Hawkins feels about that. And, and if you like the idea, we were thinking outdoors somewhere, maybe at the city park. If not there, maybe outside the high school. There's a, a little, uh, cove with picnic tables and things right outside the cafeteria at the high school. And it could just be, you know, uh, you could be there. Maybe some of us could be there with you if teachers want to stop by and meet you and say hi or community members or whoever, uh, you know, maybe just have an afternoon set aside for that.
That'd be great. I would love that.
Okay. I will, um, I'll contact you and we'll come up with a date and a time. And I'll let the board members know and we'll make sure to get the word out to the, to the community as well.
Great. I'm looking forward to it.
And, uh, our final item is, well, not quite final. Uh, item 14, the date of the next Board of Education meeting is Monday, July 20th, 2020 at 6:00 PM. And then we also need to go into executive session to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline promotion, demotion or compensation of a public employee or official. So if I could have a motion to go into executive session?
Dr. Turner?
Second.
Uh, believe that was Mr. Glenn. I wasn't looking at my screen.
No, Michael, uh, Michael was trying to say something.
Okay.
I'm sorry, on the, um, next board meeting?
Yes.
But now whether it's virtual or live?
Uh, I guess, I would say, I know that the other board members have expressed wanting to do our meetings in person. Um, I still sort of come out on the side of being more cautious, but I'd say let's, let's wait and see what the trend in coronavirus cases is doing as we get closer to that. If we're having any kind of a spike in Hamilton County, I think it would be wise to keep it virtual. If things are looking not too bad, we can space out pretty well in the boardroom. Uh, so maybe check back in with each other in a couple of weeks and, and see how things are looking at that point. Does that sound good to everyone or do we want to make the decision right now?
Well, we can wait.
I say just go virtual.
Virtual.
Okay. We'll, we'll keep it on Zoom then. Uh, at least for July and then we'll revisit that for the August meeting and, and decide then.
Thank you.
Uh, okay. Executive session. Did I have a motion?
Go move.
And do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Moved by Mr. Glenn, seconded by Ms. Bryant. Uh, so we are going into executive session at 7:08. And Mr. Burdette, we need to, uh, we need to go dark on the-
Roll call.
Oh. Well, we've already gone into executive session here. So let's, um, yeah, I think Michael's gone.
No, I'm here.
Oh, okay. We, we actually need to still be in public for just a second because we need to vote to go into executive session. Sorry about that. Okay.
You're back.
Uh, Ms. Brooks, could we have a vote on the executive session, please?
Yeah. Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Burdette, um, I'll, and I'll just send you a text when we're, uh, when we're out. If that's, if that's okay with you.
I think so. Drew, is that it? Would that work for you? Drew?
Yes, that works for me.
Okay. So they text me, Drew, can you tell me your, send me a message with your number?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks. So I'm sorry, one more question. Drew, I have to leave like, because I don't want to hear what they're saying. Cause I can't be, I just, do I just leave the meeting and come back into the meeting?
Yeah, that should work.
Okay. So just, oh, send me a message real quick with your number real quick.
Okay. So we need everybody out of the meeting except for the board members and Ms. Brooks.
Oh, you want me in there? Okay.
Yes, please.
I'm, I'm leaving. Hold on. Just let me get his number. Or Drew, just call me at six one nine eight three three one, six one nine eight three three one.
Okay.
Okay. I'm leaving now. Bye bye.
Okay. And Drew, if you're still on, we, we need you to actually exit the meeting as well.
Okay. Sorry. Wait, let me figure out how to do that without ending the whole meeting.
Okay. If you want to just walk away, we'll take your word for it that you've walked away.
Okay, that works. That'll be easier.
Okay. So, uh, the purpose of, we actually have a twofold purpose for the executive session. Um, the first is that Dr. Hawkins sent, I believe it was a text a week or so ago about the pickups, uh, that she had been assuming that she was going to get the pickups as part of her contract. But she does not need the district to pay for her medical insurance. So, uh, it's, it's going to be not quite exactly the same amount. But if we add the pickups to her contract and we take off the medical insurance, it will come out relative-
I'm sorry to, I'm really sorry to interrupt. Uh,
Yes.
I was told that I'm supposed to have you guys go to like a separate meeting for the executive session.
Ah.
Um, because I'm not sure how I can mute you guys going out on the stream. Um, without muting it for each other.
Okay, um, let me-
Mr. Burdette would have to, because he took us to the other place last-
Let me, I'll text Michael and, um, ask him to take care of that.
Okay. Sorry about that.
No, thank you for letting it out.
Hey Drew.
Yeah.
Yeah. Are you able to pass the host to someone else?
Uh, yeah, that should be able to work. Yeah, let's try that.
I just got a text from somebody who said that they can hear everything.
Okay.
Uh, actually the problem with passing the host off is then I, I won't know when you guys are done to like get back on.
Oh, wow.
Right. Well, I, I'll, I'll be texting Michael for- Right, well, I'll, I'll be texting Michael Burdette to let him know when we're ready to come back on.
Okay.
Um, I did just text him to say that we needed a separate meeting, so let's see what he says about that. He might, I don't know if it would take him a little while to set that up.
I've got Michael on the phone right now, so he's headed back in there.
Okay.
To fix it.
Drew?
Yeah.
What do you need me to do? What can we do?
Um, if you guys could form like a separate meeting, I think that would be the best way to go about, so I can keep this graphic on here on the stream.
Okay.
And then join back into this one.
Can I send you guys a link to a Google Meet and then you go to that?
Yes.
Okay, give me two seconds.
The only thing is, right now, we're all seeing share screen, so none of us can see our email. Okay, that did it.
Hi, all. Jason dropping by real quick to make sure we've got everything under control. You can, you can just hit escape. It's just a full screen of the Zoom.
Okay. But we can leave it open in a tab. Correct? Or do we need to close out completely? Do we need to?
I would just mute yourselves.
Yeah.
Well, you can't mute yourself and be on a different meeting. Hold on. What do we do? Jason's here, you said? Jason?
Yes.
Cuz we did a exec, they did an executive session at the last meeting, I thought.
Yes, we did.
Yeah, but I think we, we might have gone into a separate meeting.
Yeah.
You guys did.
Okay, then here's here's the link. Coming to you now.
Okay, on the, um, on the Zoom page, it just says Zoom now, so we don't have, I don't have anything to mute or anything on that.
Um, Drew, Drew should be able to go around and mute everybody.
Okay.
Um, do you guys want him to turn off your video as well? That way, um, we can't, sorry, my birds are in the background. That way, we can't, uh, see if you guys are holding things up or stuff like that as well, just to be, uh, safe.
That would be good. Thanks.
So what, what he's gonna do is he'll go ahead and share the screen again. Um, I think he stopped doing that so we could get everything back under control. Um, and then you guys are gonna just hit escape on your computer. Or at the top where it says view options, you can hit exit full screen. And then it's gonna look much more normal for you.
Yeah, got it.
And you said Ms. Brooks should be in this meeting?
Yes.
Okay, it's sent.
Okay, I just got it.
It seems like everybody's got this. I'm gonna head on out.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. Have a wonderful night.
You too.
Michael.
What are we doing?
Ms. Ellis, you're going to the link that I sent that says, um, this is Zoom link. So mute yourself back and go to that Zoom link.
I mean, on the, on the, on the thing here.
Mr. Kilgore, I need you to leave the Zoom and go to the new email I sent you. So I would close the Zoom meeting and then go to your email and click on a Google link that I sent you.
Anyone hear me?
No, Mr. Kilgore, you're still on the Zoom.
Yeah, I closed it out and the, you didn't, I didn't get your email.
I'll send it again.
Okay.
Okay, I just sent it again to your Mad Health email.
Okay.
Subject line is Google Meet. Kilgore, did you click on my Google link?
I did, and when it goes to your screen, it says host will not accept you.
Oh, I haven't got your invitation yet.
Let me go back to it again.
Yeah, do it again. I, I haven't denied you, so. You heard him through my phone. Okay. Okay. Okay, bye. Mr. Kilgore, Dr. Turner's calling you.
You hear me?
What did you say?
I said the host has stopped my video. That's what it's doing to me.
Dr. Turner's gonna call you because I'm not getting it coming to me that Dr. Turner's gonna call you because I'm not getting it coming to me that you're asking to come in. So she's gonna call you and just hold up the phone. Okay, but so go ahead and stay, mute yourself and stay on the Zoom.
You mean stay right here where I'm at?
Right, but, but mute yourself, so when she calls you, you're not being heard over the phone. Okay.
Okay, how about now on the video? Okay, as long as it works for you guys, it works for me. Okay.
Mr. Kilgore, mute yourself. On the computer.
It's how I did it.
You want to mute it, so you need to mute yourself. There you go. You're muted now. Drew, can you call me at that number I gave you?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so the board meeting isn't over?
No, hold on.
Okay.
Mr. Glenn, it looks like you're unmuted.
Yep, I'm here.
Oh, you guys are coming back.
Yeah.
Okay, they're coming back from the executive session. Okay, thank you.
All right.
Okay, so I'm here, Kenny's here, I see Emmett. I see Carol, I see Kim, I see Becky. That sounds like everybody, right? Um, now I'm not seeing... Oh yeah, I'm seeing everyone.
Um, it says you cannot start your video because the host has stopped it.
Oh, let me let Drew know you're back.
Oh, I'm back.
I'm back.
Let Drew know that you're all back.
Okay.
I'm back.
Oh.
Now your videos are back, so he might be ready.
Okay, are we... Are we all officially back?
I see everybody, yeah. I see everybody except Kim. I don't see her pretty picture.
Well, I just, I, I need to make sure that we're, we're live and on the recording.
We are live and you're all good.
Okay, all right, so we're back. Uh, item fifteen on our agenda is adjournment. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
So love them.
Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Mr. Glenn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, we are adjourned and Mr. Glenn, go have a happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Kenny.
Thank you all. Party time.